Yeah. Yeah, let's welcome everybody to the May 12, 2022.
Okay, we are recording and Sally is entering.
Sally, is she on Zoom or she?
Sally is attending through Zoom.
Okay, are we ready now, Sean?
We are.
Okay, again, welcome everybody to the May 12, 2022 regular meeting for the Library Board of Trustees. And President Dean Surratt is not here, so the Vice President Bianca Richards is handling the meeting tonight. And and again, we're in a hybrid mode. Some of us are on Zoom, some of us are in person, and the public can participate either in person or on Zoom. And call, roll call, please.
Sure. Bianca Richards.
Present.
Kenneth Gross. Annie Chang Long. Present. Thank you.
And we also have friends of the library, Ellen Torres is with us, and on Zoom is Sally Kilby and anybody else on?
No one else on Zoom.
Yes, and then, and then the staff, of course, present are Kathy Billings, Sean Fay, and our council member Diana Monde, our council liaison. Okay, and so moving right along to our agenda. I don't think we have any presentations.
And I don't think, Sean, do we have any general public comments?
No.
So we can go right into your first action. So our public, public comments, right?
Right, but I believe that these guys are here to speak on a, on a specific item, so they do their comments.
Yeah, they have to do that. That's right. But so there was no public comment. Okay, so moving right along, thank you to our action. Did you all get a chance to review the minutes of last night? Are there any edits, questions, changes? Do I have a motion to approve of the April minutes?
Move to approve minutes.
So thank you. Okay, move to the second, or April 14 minutes, and roll call, please.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross. Annie Chang Long. I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little bit? Thank you.
Okay, now moving on to item number four on our agenda, the parcel tax renewal. And then, do we take public comments first on this, or how do you? What's the difference? Do you have a presentation and then an opportunity for the commission or board members to ask questions and then public comment before you begin discussion?
So I'll just briefly, you know, the, the staff report is here. What we're looking for tonight from the Board of Trustees is their recommendation about how we proceed and what terms we will be recommended to the council for the renewal of the personal tax. I think that we've been, you know, for many months, looking at, I'm talking about renewing it in perpetuity, but in discussion with the city staff, we've had a lot of discussions and have, our, our, the staff feeling at this moment is to back away from that idea and to renew it for a shorter period of time. So we can talk more about that when we, when we're having our discussion. I don't know if you want me to say much more, if you want to just get to the, to the discussion and the public comment.
No, let's move on to the discussion and the public comment. So we discuss first before we do the public comment.
We do this to be the opportunity for you to ask questions of Kathy regarding the information provided either orally or in the staff report, and then public comment and then discussion.
Well, I mean, I'll go first. After I read this, the only questions that I have, and I was just I'd like to have a lot of questions. I don't know if I'm disappointed, but I'm just curious about why this, the city staff feel that we should not do it in perpetuity. Because I just thought it, it was, you know, it's going to save money. It's, I think it's not that big of a tax. I don't know why. There was some worry about that, so that was, yeah, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, so the concern, I think, comes from the idea that we haven't done any kind of polling. The city attorney felt that in order to, that we should do more research before we were to propose such a big change. And in talking with the city manager and the deputy city manager, there was a feeling that the economic climate is uncertain and that COVID has a lot of uncertainty and that it might be risky to ask, it might be, the risk might be that if we ask people to renew it in perpetuity, that they are uncomfortable doing that and they vote no, and then we have no, no tax at all. So I think it's just a conservative approach and a concern that that we don't have enough evidence to back up the idea that it would be supported in perpetuity, which I went into this, they haven't done this type of research before. I think they did it in 1994, but they, to my knowledge, they haven't brought in any kind of polling company or a research company in the prior renewals. And as you know, and from the attachments in the staff report, passage has always been very high. And the library is, you know, in the strategic plan that the city did, the library is very popular and people are pleased with it. So it's just, it's just conservative, I think it's just a conservative approach, and you guys are welcome to make a different recommendation that would be presented to council. And, and again, council, and you may feel that that is adequate evidence that this will pass, and that's great. If you feel that way, that's, that will be incorporated into the staff report that goes to council when they make the call on what direction we go.
Well, I was just, I was hoping, because we had, we did it with the UUT in perpetuity, I just thought it would make sense. Let's get the residents thinking that we're going to save money by doing these in perpetuity. And it's just so much more cost effective and, you know, we're all volunteers. It's, it's a lot of time and energy, a lot of money. I, I, I think, I think, I think we can make a point to the residents to do it in perpetuity. I mean, it's, this is such a small tax.
I think that there, so as far as the UUT goes, that had been another point in favor, I think, of doing it in perpetuity. I think it's a little bit different in terms of how people perceive it, because the UUT was, yes, it's going to go up because your, your utilities are going up, but what they had on paper in front of them was that it was set at 7% forever. Whereas this is saying, you're going to vote to do this as it increases over the years in amounts that we can't, you don't know what they're going to be. So there's a little bit, it's a little bit less certain. They're, if they're voting yes for that, there's more uncertainty than there is, I think, for the UUT.
Well, I, I just think, I think some of the residents aren't going to mind that it's still, it's such a small, like, that, that's just, that's just my feeling. And I'm, you know, I don't, I don't know.
I, I'm of the opposite mind. I have a different question, but related to that. And I think it's easier to get people to pass a tax if it's not in perpetuity, because regardless of the amount of the tax, I just think the word tax to some people, it's a turnoff and they're suspicious. And certainly something that will es- can escalate, and you can't say how much it will escalate, you know, it's relatively small amounts to us. So I think if we, the goal is to get it passed, and I think it's easier to get it passed if they, it's five years, seven years, knowing that it's limited, but we're going to go back anyway. I just don't know the, the cost of going back every five or seven years. And that was, leads to my question, why five versus seven? Is it going to be more costly to go back after five years and put it on the ballot again? Should we just do seven, or was there a reason why?
I think the cost, I mean, the general, if, if we do it as part of a general election, but, but I don't think there's that much added cost. But I think the cost, there's cost in terms of the, the committee that does the work in the community to do the advocacy. I don't know how much you guys typically look to raise, but it's a tremendous amount of effort that goes into what the, the community members do on the committee.
What is it, Sally? Isn't it about $23,000 that we tried to raise? Yeah.
Miss 23, because I have it in my notes.
$23,000.
Raise for what, though? I mean, what is it?
We have a list of the, the banners, long signs, flyers, banners.
And who's to say that in seven years, you're going to have the same core of people that are as dedicated?
Getting older, right.
No, right, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions? Because I know that the public comment folks have, have some ideas, so.
What is, what is the reason for the five versus seven?
That's just a range that, so over time, the, the range of renewal has been five years, six years, six years, five years, eight years, when Brendan had the big one, when we, when we were able to raise the base tax and include the CPI increase. So it's sort of just reflective of how it has been historically renewed for periods of time.
And, yeah, I would just offer that it feels like we rely on this revenue source for the library. And so if we're going to rely on this now, or feel like we're going to rely on it in five to seven years, and asking it to go up according to the Consumer Price Index doesn't seem like voters would feel like that means it's going to skyrocket to 20% or something, right? Like, it's going with inflation, because your costs are going to increase at the library as well. And I do feel like voters are educated and understand that, that like, it's not too a detriment, because this is a service that they are receiving, and we actually need it to make the gap, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, all right, so thank you. So let's, we'll go to public comment, and then after public, public comment, we can discuss more. So you'd like to introduce yourself?
Like I said, hi, I'm Brendan Duret. I was on the board from 2007, 2014. Took a year off to do Measure L in 2015. We went late. And then back on the board, 15 to 18, until they got tired of it. By 11 years, hard time. So is there, is there an initiative that'll be on the November ballot that is going to ban Evergreen taxes?
Well, yes, there, the way that I read it is that it doesn't so much explicitly ban them, but it says that they would have to have an explicit end date. So it's still not clear what would happen if that passes.
But it's on the ballot, though.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I believe that it's received its signatures.
Still haven't qualified. It, it's circulating for signatures, but I definitely believe that the Secretary of State has officially. But I've got my computer here.
Yeah, let's look.
When's the deadline? Do you have these?
Well, there's two, there are two items that are circulating petition. And I think that the one that is relevant to us is circulation deadline is August 2nd. So we won't know. We'll have to put our measure on the ballot before we know about this. So, you know, how much we take that into account, I'm not sure. Anyway, it's your public comment. Go ahead.
So, so I'm, I'm here, so to speak, on behalf of the Measure L Committee. I'm just, I'm just one of the committee people. So we sent somebody here, and so our main message is just be in favor of something. Whether it's five years, seven years, Evergreen, recapture, there's all kinds of options. But the main thing that our, our opinion is to send something on to City Council so they can do their thing and support it, because it can't go on the ballot until they support it. I think there's really good arguments for, like, every possible option here. So the, the anti-Evergreen taxing, I see as a pretty big risk factor to have a proposed Evergreen tax maybe on the ballot with a initiative to ban Evergreen taxes would be awkward, maybe not legal, who knows, but it'd be stopper. So that's, to me, that's a pretty big risk factor that it goes against going for Evergreen this, this time. I think the committee would probably pass it even if it's Evergreen, because the library is really like a golden thing here in the community. If it was me, I would go for seven years and be safe, because if it doesn't pass, it's a real clinic. Financially, you know, emotionally, in, in all kinds of ways. And, and if one of these things gets defeated, it's super hard to come back. Because a lot of these don't make it here and there. I mean, we're, we're really lucky here. We have such a rapid attendance, but, but if you look at our surrounding communities, and we ran, you could wonder that they, they have no public library at all at this point. Because there's, there's a task, this is like 10 years ago. But it happens, and then, so to me, I would, I would be kind of risk averse, but I would do it, except I'm not. Meanwhile, so the City Council will have a, will have a say. So last time around, we were very cautious, and so we, the Library Board, we passed a very conservative, minimal ask, because in 2015, that was the peak of Tea Party anti-tax fervor. And these library parcel taxes were going down in place all over California. So we sent a very, very honest one in the City Council, and the City Council said, no. So just as an example, they don't necessarily just approve. So what they did is, is they said, well, no, we want you guys to ask for more. And so that was an anticipated thing. No, that was fine, but just as an example, so there's always a chance to make go to them, and they may, and they may say, no, we think it should be Evergreen, we think it should not be. Who knows, who knows what? But that was actually pretty fun, and we all, like, immediately panicked because of all the anti-tax stuff. And if it worked out anyway, whatever, 87%.
Almost 81, yeah, 81.79%.
Yeah, so I don't need to add much information, because your package is fantastic. This is more information than we had last time. And those, the lowest vote was the very first one.
Yeah, 67%. The big hurdle was to get people on board, and then after that, they saw the benefit and the value, I guess, you know? I mean, it definitely tells a story that leads to some degree of confidence that it would pass, but.
Yeah, so, you know, completely, that's you guys, but that, that would be my 10th sense worth that may or may not be what the entire Measure L thinks at this point. But I think we all think that the key, the key here is to get it passed. It doesn't, the particulars are less important than, than it passes, for sure. Whatever everybody thinks, you know, the cost of the campaigns, so I know, so this time, yeah, they raised 27 grand so far, which is cool. We pulled it in for 12, but we did everything ourselves. We led to the envelope, so we did this. It was really fun. But, but yeah, it's a lot of work, and the people doing these things. I'm not sure how big a factor, but it's sort of an effort. So any, do you guys have any questions about the?
Yeah, I mean, what's the legislative result if a ban on Evergreen taxes passes while we have, and, and we've had an Evergreen tax on it, which passed, would it be invalid? Whereas if we had a five or seven on, Evergreen passes, we still have our five or seven.
You know, I'm trying, I think I found the initiative in question. If it's the one that I'm reading right now, it's obtained 25 of 100% of signatures required to qualify to appear. But I don't know whether or not with the, you know, in order for our measure to pass, the county legislature has to certify our election, and that typically occurs about three weeks after the election. And it, it occurs to me that it's possible that because it'll take the state longer likely to certify the initial, the results of the initiative, we might sweep by, but I'm not sure. That would be a question for the city.
The city attorney.
I mean, I think just generally the proposition that if they both pass, I think ours is stricken more. But I mean, if it's an issue of timing, that ours is certified or passes before there's a certified, depending upon, I don't know if there's a retroactive application of it, but just statutory construction, I think if, because you couldn't back up, you couldn't say, okay, it's not, it's not in perpetuity, it's for five years, for seven years, because that's not what was on the ballot, I think it's stricken.
And so what I would recommend to our city attorney is that we have a proviso that anticipates the potential enactment. Put that in the measure that we submit to our voters, such that the intent is to do a, an infinity tax, but, or a perpetuity tax, but should that be declared legally impermissible, then the default would be five or seven or eight. Well, it would have to be, can't be separated, it has to be eight, has to be even years now. Well, I'm thinking you, you know, now our elections have been by, by virtue of another state statute, they've been consolidated with either state or federal, so every, all of our, and, and this is up and down the state, unless you've had over 25% of history, as I recall, of achieving more than 25% local participation in your local elections, you were required to conform, to modify your election cycle to conform to the state and federal election cycle. So that's why everything is happening at once.
Well, and, and we, of course, are doing this very early because of that. So we, you know, this doesn't expire until June 2024. So we're renewing it quite early because of the election cycle, right? So I'm assuming it would be the same in the future if we would just have to do it at whatever election was first, you know, was, we'd have to do it before whichever general election was closest.
What, and my, my only, my only other concern is if we put too much wording, is it going to confuse people? Evergreen, perpetuity, CPI, I don't know.
It would have to be very clear and limited.
Yeah, see, so and I, I'm afraid if we get too bogged down with all of this, then people might just not even vote.
It's already in there. That's not a change.
Yeah, but if we put in something about, like Diana suggested, saying that if this other
Yeah.
thing happens, then this, that might be confusing for people.
Yeah, because you know, some people like, they go, well, should I vote? And if I vote this, would that happen if, for, or, that, I don't know, I don't know.
It's really unfortunate that that.
There's like the highlighted piece, right? There's like the title that's highlighted and the clarity of the language. I mean, I could see why it's confusing, but then it reverts to something kind of what was less conservative, right? It reverts to five to seven years. So then, as a layman's voter, I feel like they say, oh, they're trying to do this forever, but in case there's no political will for it, then it's going to be five to seven years.
Right, and I guess, and then it would just be up to the, it would be who was on the committee, those of us who are on the committee, to make sure that we just educate people about what's going on.
It is a hard thing to educate.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I think we're looking at the, the ballot, the ballot questions you've often put together. So like I mean, I did, I think you're the king of the complicated ballot question.
Yes.
I mean, I'm reading this right now, like, yeah?
Well, you have to complicate it.
I love the one in 1994. It's great. So I'd say, don't, don't feel like that, so. Because I think ours is still confusing. I remember, we did that because, we had to do that because we raised the rates quite a bit.
Right, you had to explain all of that.
Raised the rates by, by, by a third, so we had to put the rates in the.
Right, and we won't, we won't have to do that, just say.
So it would just be, should be renewed or remain permanent.
Right.
The, the library special tax.
So what is our action tonight from the board? Do we then tonight need to come up with something definitive to present to council?
Yeah, we will, I would like to get the board's recommendation for what, what you recommend, because that then will be incorporated into what's presented to council. There'll be a different staff report for council that talks more about this discussion we, we're having and that makes explicit what your recommendation to them is.
I can also add, as I recall, we do have some flexibility. We registrar strongly suggest that we, that cities place things on the ballot by the end of July. It's possible to go until the end of August, it's frowned upon, but.
I thought it was like the second Wednesday in August or something. I thought it was like pretty early, like the second week of August is the deadline. I can ask the city clerk, but Andrew said, said that to me, so, city attorney.
I think we can call that it's later, but I remember for another initiative that I was working on, Measure W, we were definitely trying to get it done by the end of July. But that means that we are canceling the July 6 meetings, but we do have the July 14.
20, that's the, that's the tentative, yeah.
So you could, I'm a little concerned because you barely have a quorum
Yeah.
at this meeting, and this is an important decision, I think, and it may not like to clearly suggest this, but I think you could put it off to next month, because that would still give you, depending on how quickly you could put together a staff report, you could basically draft it now.
Yeah, but, so when is, in, in June, you guys meet on the 15th?
Correct.
And is there another meeting in June, or is that the?
That's the second, so that's to be then July 20.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be able, because I, yeah, I mean, in 2015, what they did, they met here, and then they went to council to get direction, and then council at a, at a later meeting actually put the measure on the ballot. So there was two council meetings, instead of going to council and saying, basically, we gave you an opportunity to discuss it and give direction, and then you directed us to come back to put it on the ballot. So do you think that we wouldn't need to do two council meetings? We would just do one council meeting where you guys would have the information, and?
What if there is two council meetings?
Andrew would have, it depends on what's submitted, because we have to actually approve the language that gets submitted to the electorate. So it would have to be all inclusive.
I think it's, might be hard to do it in one meeting, since we can't develop the language until we've gotten direction from council. So that's the only problem with having, I mean, we could have a special meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, you could just do this.
So that we.
How much notice do we have to give?
Not very much, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, how does that feel, Annie, in two minutes? Maybe we, we do that.
Does Sally have a public comment? Sally, did you have a public comment?
Just briefly, Sally Kilby, I am supportive of the imperpetuity, however you say that. But I can see the complication with this other Evergreen bill, so I can see the reason for doing a seven year. But, um, it, as Bianca says, it's a very, very small tax, and as Diana has said, there are more and more demands on the city that are taking money away from places like the library, and we're never, never going to not need this 20% of the budget. So, but appreciate deliberations on the complexity of it and the willingness of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. On, so then I would, I propose then, on, that we, the board, we have a, a special meeting that just deals with this. We're all five members, we can all be present, and we could do it virtual, you know, Zoom, pretty easy that way.
I think that, going forward, which I'll share, we have to do in person. They want, here's a memo that I'll share with you. So we need to do it in person, I believe.
Well, we can, we can, we can figure it out, because we're not, yeah, because we're going to have like a, a special meeting, so. So is that, how does that sound, that we just, yeah, and then, and then at that meeting, then, we would just talk about then the language and the issues to, then that would then, what we do would then go to City Council. And then City Council would either come back to us and say, maybe change, want us to change the language, because you're saying now maybe City Council would, two, two meetings.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, the, the, the first meeting with the City Council, it reads, I can tell you exactly what that staff report said. Direction regarding library special tax renewal options. So that was the, the staff report that went to council initially. And that was a discussion of. And that was a discussion of um. You know, are we gonna increase the rates? Are we gonna basically affirming the suggestion? And then um direct staff to return at the next meeting. And with the resolution calling the election and putting the measure on the ballot.
We have enough time to do all of this.
That was a lot more complex. There were a lot more options. I think at this point. Council has and the electorate have both proved. Separating out um part by parcel, by multi-unit, by commercial, including CPI. I think you could submit it to council in one package, so long as the city attorney has had an opportunity to review the language. By the way, I'm looking at the initiative and it's really interesting because it says unless a proposed tax has this. It shall be invalid and it says the duration of the tax. Well, to me, you could say that the duration is in perpetuity. But anyway, it does go on to say that any tax or any tax. Um, adopted after January one of this year, but prior to the effective date of this act. That was not adopted in compliance with the requirements of this section is void twelve months after the effective date of this act. There is always the possibility, although it's not one that we relish, but we did this. Unfortunately, it wasn't successful. But the city did send out a mailer to increase the lighting and landscape. Tax and unfortunately, that was not successful, but we did that by mail. Or alternatively, we could pay for a special um election. And some cities are doing that. I know um. Oh, Gasha was just talking to somebody. I know Weir just did that. They had their council election. And some other cities.
What's the definition of adopted? You had said if it's passed after this is adopted, it's void or invalid or whatever. Does adopted mean when it's passed or when it's certified or?
It's gotta be certified.
To be adopted.
Correct.
But are but are right now, the uh measure L goes until twenty twenty four, right? So. If. So this election is uh twenty twenty two, right? So if this thing passes. Yeah, then it would void out ours.
I mean, if it did.
No, this is the evergreen part. This evergreen passed in twenty twenty two.
No, I think it's the 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 measure would be to extend the tax from July first, twenty twenty four going forward. And we we're not cutting off.
No, but in but but our, if if we were to in perpetuity in twenty twenty four, we're asking the voters. The tax that would start in twenty twenty four would be in perpetuity, but if this thing passes, then we couldn't do that. Ours would be. If is that what is that how I'm understanding it?
Well, that's that's the the question, but I don't understand because what can you just read that again?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same.
Yeah, it says any tax. Adopted after January one, twenty twenty two, but prior to the effective date of this act. That was not adopted in compliance with the requirements of this section is void twelve months after the effective date of this act.
So you'd have a year and then you'd have to go back and get passed again.
Right.
Which you really.
But you you it would be in effect until July of twenty twenty four.
It's depending on how it's.
No, end of June twenty twenty five.
Well, no, that's why that's assuming we'd get an extra year because of that, but I don't I don't read it that way cuz we're in effect until twenty twenty four anyway. So I don't think the year or the.
I mean, we added the clause to say we'd go to five to seven years if there if there is this other policy that passes, then we would at least have five to seven years.
And then we're safe then. I'll just kind of let this settle down.
Then we would be safe that way.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But then we can never, if it passes, then we'll never have a chance to do it perpetually that way unless someone.
But we wouldn't anyway, right? If it passes.
If it passes, yes, it would not, we can't do it, okay. All right, so I think, okay, so that's our action before us then. Uh, thank you, public comments.
Do we do we move for that special meeting at all?
Um, I don't think so. I think the staff can just call it and reach out, right? They don't they don't need to.
I think just to make sure that the record is clear, I would suggest a motion to continue it until. A special meeting of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.
I will motion. Counselor. Until there's a special meeting for the board for us to um have a make a recommendation.
And I seconded, so it's been moved and seconded that will then continue this discussion about the parcel tax renewal at a special or trustees meet. Do you need to have a?
Yeah, yes.
No.
No.
Roll call because you're not needing roll call, you can just do it by acclamation. A year and a.
All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Any sustained? Okay, so. Thank you, everybody, for that. That gives us lots of things to think about. Okay. Nice to see you. I'm glad you got to meet everybody in person. Are you still um maybe, I hope?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. I'm in charge, thank God.
I made sure we got it.
If you like, I'd be happy to. Try to be useful at the special meeting or whatever. It's all public. It's all public, except for.
I think that'd be helpful. Yeah, but you're available.
Yeah.
My unsolicited advice is is it is a vote sometime to thinking about the timing. At the special meeting versus notice versus city council versus live for doing the staff report. Is it nice or not? We need to wanna do this special meeting sooner than you know.
I think pretty soon, yeah, I think.
Okay, all right.
Unsolicited.
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I think.
Especially since we're canceling the July sixth. Yeah, I'm just looking at it. It's, you know, this is a. Yeah, I mean, yeah, this is, you know.
Cuz we we ate a month cuz the the council wanted us to ask for more. Which was good, but we're like, oh, my God, it's so.
I know. It's made as well already. All right, well, thank you. No, that was that's good. Good advice.
Thanks for your advice.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Bernadette.
Thank you.
Great to have you.
So thanks you two for for doing this. Not such a bad idea.
All right, so moving on to um.
I get to be the guy that leaves before the rest of the. I've waited a lot of years for this.
Yeah.
Have fun.
I heard the new role in here. Okay, uh, so action. Discussion item number five, the strategic planning consultant. Do you wanna?
Yeah, I wanted to just summarize. Um, I haven't sent out, I was gonna send out some summary information about the interviews that we held. Um, but Annie and myself and Barb and Meta and Bianca interviewed both of the firms. And then we had a debrief and we decided um that our preferences were Barry Dunn. And I haven't made the announcement, I haven't contacted the vendors yet because um I'm working with the city attorney and the risk manager. Barry Dunn had a couple of exceptions to our standard professional services agreement, so I'm trying to work through those. I think I'm almost there. I'm hoping tomorrow to be able to let the applicants know because there obviously, it's been a couple of weeks since we interviewed them. Um, but I think you guys might wanna speak to this. We feel good about that decision and. If you wanna say anything about why we decided what we decided, but I will send a summary of kind of what we what we learned when we met with them.
Did you wanna make any?
Yeah, I mean, I think go back to my notes.
Yeah.
No, I um. Susan Kent was a highlight of the Barry Dunn team. She's local. She'll be able to be physically present here with us. And she has a really strong understanding of her core locally in Los Angeles. And so I feel like uh we have a lot of trust that she's gonna guide us well, though, with like our community and uh kind of local dynamics and everything.
Yeah, and I think uh I I agree. I think uh uh Susan Kent was a a big uh part of that. And uh and I and I think um we just, we've learned of, I think, like Annie and I, this library IQ that they um. They they.
They're a subsidiary of a of a company called um LSS. That um is a, they they run libraries for for municipalities that outsource their library services. Which is kind of a controversial thing in some communities. A lot of communities, it's perfect. It works great. But um in some of the smaller communities where the city government has tried to do such a thing, the residents have made a big fuss. So a lot of the um. The references that they gave us and the 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 strategic plans that they've done are with libraries that are in their network already. As as opposed, sort of like a captive audience, you know, as opposed to that they've competed with other firms and and have. And they've done some, I mean, they've done some with with libraries that are not affiliated with LSS, but um that was a little bit. Yeah, of a concern, I think.
Yeah, and I think like with Annie and I and with everybody on the committee, we just felt that Barry Dunn was very professional and they were just, they kind of upped the stakes. And we just felt very comfortable, you know.
Yeah, the last thing I have in my notes to highlight is that the staff really appreciated their approach, which was talking to the staff first and getting guidance on where to go. Versus looking at quantitative data, which is more a library IQ's approach, was like a quantitative data and let that guide. And they felt like the uh qualitative nature of what's happening, you know, was the starting place. Some of them don't wanna consider it a data, but that it'd be a better starting approach. So I liked that the staff was.
Right, yeah, I think the staff felt that the last time we did a strategic plan. Kind of a concept of what a library should be was already in mind before the data, you know, before kind of the qualitative and status collection started. And they they liked the idea that that Barry Dunn will start with. Learning about the community, learning about the library as it is now and learning about staff. So, yeah, I think staff, I I think we were all on the same page. I mean, library IQ could do it, but I think we we're pretty confident that we made a good decision.
So let's hope it all works out and we do enough.
Yeah.
The attorney, yeah, the city attorney.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna send them, you would send in a memo up to all the board.
Yeah, I'll send a memo and again, again, the only time I happen is because I haven't, I need to make sure we get a conference. We will be able to.
We're going on to number six, the library operations study and strategic plan.
So what I have in here is um a couple of documents that just have all the recommendations from the library operations study, which is was completed in twenty seventeen, I believe. And then the strategic plan was which was completed right around the same time.
Yep.
And Bianca has paper copies of those. Dean asked me to um. Use on the status column, he suggested these um. These uh descriptors that I'm using. And I thought that we could just sort of go through these and and um talk about any of them, answer questions, explain the status of of what's going on. There are some things that um the staff have rejected as being not viable or not purposeful. Um, there are other things that are stalled because we don't have physical space.
Yeah, I had a look at it on the P D S.
Yeah, cuz it's. They got cut off and it's missing. I think it's missing the first page also. Uh, you should, it's S T P L public and it's no password.
Oh, just get ready.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
Sean, is it possible for you to print um the item six pages and?
It's just the green, the blue.
The blue's okay.
The blue is fine.
So just the green pages, you need to click print, you need to click fit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's look at the blue first, then. I don't know if you wanna go to these one by one or if you guys wanna ask questions that you have about any particular items. Or if you want me to just go through and kind of give you a status on each of them.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so under Community Hub, um. Broadened Adult Program offers an audience, including single adult and senior programs. Um, I have compromise there because we're sort of. You know, we have a limited amount of staff and we're doing as much as we can in terms of programming. So, you know, we haven't put together a whole suite of programs for single adults or a whole suite of programs for seniors. And the other thing about this is that the seniors have so much programming already. That we don't typically try to compete with what the senior center offers. So I don't know, because I wasn't here when this was done, I don't know what the feedback was in the strategic plan that led to this recommendation. Uh, perhaps there was feedback that said we need more for seniors. I really, I really don't know. But um basically, I say compromise because we're doing the best that we can to do public programs for adults of all types.
But I think in one of the studies, it said because our population was aging, aging. Yeah, that's what.
Which is interesting to me, though, again, because we have the best senior center I've ever encountered, you know, in many cities. It's just such a strong program. So it's not to say that we don't need to do things for seniors, but they um they really gravitate toward and and feel affiliated with the senior center. Um, so we've done things with them, you know, we've we've had workshops with them to show them how to use eBooks. We've, um, you know, we're gonna do the memory lab with them, so it's not that we're not working with them, but anyway, that's where we are with that. We're we're sort of doing the best we can. Um, make local history more prominent and accessible. I think we've done a great job of that. Um, Olivia has um created a finding aid to the entire archive. So you can now find, you know, keyword search and find pretty much anything that you you want. She's done a lot of digital exhibits. Um, provide digital training. I think what that means is to um. You know, teach people how to use computers and teach people how to um use their devices and teach people how to use our resources. And that's something we do want to to do and we we simply haven't achieved it.
What does not achieve mean wasn't done at all or just not so you decided to lose satisfaction or?
Not not done at all, really. I mean, again, we've done some digital kind of trainings and outreach, but we haven't done the kinds of things we might like to do. Like have a a drop-in um device workshop, which I've done in other libraries where, you know, you're there, the people come in with their device and you just help them in the moment. I have other libraries, bigger libraries with more staff. They teach computer classes. We don't have a lab to teach computer classes. The senior center has a lab. So in the past, we've taught classes in the senior center lab. So that's again, something that, you know, we'd like to be able to do, but we just, um, you know, we we only have so many people. So um that I it's not achieved to the extent that I I think they they were looking for.
Well, and is it really necessary for anyone other than seniors?
Well, I think that um I know Olivia wants to do, and we don't subscribe anymore to ancestry dot com, but Olivia was gonna do like an ancestry dot com workshop to show people how to use that. So I think that there's some of our resources that we, wh- which I count that under digital training is, you know, how to use um some of the resources that we have. Um, so there are uh those kinds of things that we could be doing and we would like to be doing more of that. So um the book discussion group, um, the backstory on that is that we had a book discussion group that the the staff led. Um, in twenty fifteen, when we lost a lot of staff, the city told us to stop doing programs. And the book group was sort of cut loose and they did their own thing from twenty fifteen until just recently. When the public services staff got together to decide whether or not it was something that we could take under our umbrella again. And whether that was the best use of our time. And the decision amongst that team, which I concur with, is that it was not the best use of our time um to dedicate so much staff time to seven, eight, ten, twelve people. Um, so they they were told at that time that we were, you know. Finally, this has been decided that we're not gonna lead your book group. You can continue to have your book group, which they had been doing all these years. Um, so that's that's where that is. We just uh with all the priorities that we have for the public services team, we didn't think that was. So that's that's where that is, we just uh with all the priorities that we have for the public services team, we didn't think that was a good use of our time. So we are not revitalizing the book discussion group. Um, focus on local southeast Pasadena culture, not sure what that means, Bianca, do you, you have the strategic plan, I didn't know if that meant in programming or in collections. Is there a more detailed definition of that under the, or is it just the same, just the sentence? So I said in progress because we are doing more with local history and trying to create programming around local history and trying to um you know, put that information out there, so that's a focus that I think.
I would assume it means diversity. Given the diversity of our local population, and I think you're doing a good job of that.
Yeah, doing, trying to do programs with, in partnership with some of our groups like South Pasadena. Right, yeah.
S P C C, L G B T.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says the library relevance is local, so focusing on the needs of the community is crucial, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so in progress, a work in progress. Young Minds uh continue to provide kindergarten physical readiness, yes, we do that, summer reading program, yes, we do that. Um, increase the number of tween and teen programs. Um, we do the teen, the tween. COVID has been a little weird, but the tween, we normally do twice a year, a special program for the tweens, and then of course teens participate in the Teen Advisory Board. And we've also done quite a few partnerships with um Girl Scouts that are getting their gold awards, so we've done a number of of things with them where they've actually taught the other teens, you know, photography or comic book design, things like that.
You've done a lot with teens, more than anybody else that I recall.
Yeah, we're we're catching up on that. It's, you know, again, it's another community that's really heavily programmed already, you know, it's kind of like the seniors, they have those kids have so much to do at school because it's such a good school that it's um, you know, trying to find a way to engage them, and that's why, so for example, the summer and summer reading program, the high school origami club is going to do an origami workshop for us, so we we give them an opportunity to kind of build their skills and do things like that.
It's also of increased importance given the city council has approved the dissolution of the Youth Commission. So those high school and junior high students that wanted to put that on their college application now have what you're offering to them, which I think is really important, cuz you do have a lot of high achievers that want to show how diverse they are.
And that's interesting, I should talk to the Senior Center about that because the Youth Commission did the digital training, device training with the seniors, and if they no longer are a body, that we may need to kind of work with the Senior Center and maybe our tap can do some of that.
Would be terrific.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at that.
And Kathy, I just wanna, uh, yeah, cuz it's getting to be eight o'clock and it, you know.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. That are not.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um stalled, R F I D, under contemporary technology, that's basically a a financial issue, I mean, you know, we would need um hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars to do that project, so that's why that stalled, it's not really uh anybody's fault, we will continue to ask for that in the budget, I didn't ask for it this year. But the city is working on a an I T master plan for the city, which we've never had before, which.
Did not get the Green Light Council ask for it, make a request that it be part of ARFA.
Oh.
Yeah, make a request for use of the ARFA front.
Okay.
Because one of my big things on council is trying to give staff the technology that makes your jobs easier and more efficient, and this is perfect within that.
Right, I'll have to look at the C I P cuz it is in the C I P and they, it might be in for next year, I mean, the money's still not, you know, identified, but. Oh, you have that, yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
But I I'll make a note of that and it, cuz it, that will.
Go for it this year, Kathy, and then, if it's not this year, then next year, cuz I'm not gonna be on council next year.
You're a big advocate for us, I know. Um, capture library metrics that focus on outcome and customer satisfaction, we just uh haven't been doing it, we just haven't, we don't have a survey, we don't have, uh, you know, a post-event survey, it just hasn't happened. Again, this goes back to twenty seventeen and um it didn't happen under the prior director, that hasn't happened under us, so I think once we can get our feet under us and um yeah, we need to look at that, um, maybe do some kind of ongoing portal where people can give us feedback as opposed to you know, necessarily doing surveys after every event, but we do need to do more of that, so that's just, hasn't happened. Um, engage an architect to re-image, which I think that means reimagine. The library wants the senior center space becomes available, so that is um not happening. So that is just, you know, not gonna happen. And then under community awareness, um, another one that's sort of out of our hands, which is partner with the city to address the lack of library parking. That's a great strategic thought, but um it's not something that we can actually do much about.
Putting a sign to somewhere to remind user patrons of the existence of Mission Meridian Garage.
We don't have a sign, um, it's on, I believe, our website. We could have a sign, you know, patrons call us, like if people call us about parking, we would tell them that. I really think that it's it's not during the day, like during library kind of regular hours that a parking is an issue, it's really during special events. And then it certainly is usually on the flyer that says there's parking in Michigan, you know what I mean, it's part of the advertising. I don't know if a sign here would hit the right audience.
I wonder for the survey too, if something that a high school student or someone that's looking for some volunteer hours could help you with also.
Like putting it together.
Take like a a mature high school student or something. I know they're paying off money for an intern.
Yeah.
But it could just be a sweet project, once you guys get it ready and done, then you know it'll be easier to keep on.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion. Um, so back to the green, which is really long, the Library Operations Study had fifty-six um suggestions. So let's see, stalled, if we're gonna focus on stalled, and you guys can always follow up with any questions you have with me after this meeting. Increase the internet workstations to reach a target of one for every one thousand residents, so that would be twenty-five workstations, we have, I think, sixteen. I think sixteen, um, we just don't have anywhere to put them. Um, and right now, you can see we've enabled all of them, you know, last time we were, hadn't done that yet, but we've enabled all of them and we're not really having capacity issues, so even though, again, this is kind of a this one for every one thousand residents is a kind of standard library metric, but it depends on your community, you know, if your community all you know, many, many people have computers at home or they're getting one from the school, you know, maybe we don't really need to meet that metric. Uh, let's see, stalled, the last thing again, R F I D, there's some overlap in these two things. I do wanna address the rejected ones since we, you know, were told we should do this and we decided not to, I feel like I should tell you why. So dedicate a computer workstation for patrons to register for a library card, some libraries do that, they have a the patron goes to the computer, puts in all their information, then they come to the desk and the information's already in the computer and that's pretty much it. Our patrons don't wanna do that, they they don't wanna do it themselves, they don't, it's confusing, I mean, I've been in libraries where they use it and it's sort of like trying to push this work off on the the customer that you didn't have to verify the accuracy anyway, I just think it's um it's it's not a good fit for us and we don't have the space for it. And I'm, and people would just be like, no, can't you just do it for me, so we're just, I think it's just, again, that was sort of a a trend that I think the form, the consultant that worked on this thought that that would, you know, help free up staff time or something, but I really, our staff don't think that that's the case. Um, transition from music CDs to a streaming and or download service. We did look at that a number of years ago, since I've been here. It's very costly and our community is not the, they're not the quickest technology adapters. Um, and I don't think that it's it's a good use of our limited digital resources to 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 subscribe to something like that, people really love the CD collection and use it. Um, and I think that that's okay, they can get their streaming music from L I P L or, you know, Brand Library or someplace else. The facility, so stalled, remodel the existing first floor space as a short-term goal, I mean, we, you know, remodeled in terms of um changing the the service desk, but that's really all that we did, so you know, that's just sort of not happening at this time, I think going through the next strategic plan will give us an idea of what people want from the physical space and that might be a time to revisit what that means. Prepare a major space allocation study, that's another thing that I started looking at, but you know, we haven't done it, I, again, I think we get to the strategic plan and then it probably would behoove us to do that and it would help the Twenty First Century Committee for the library to know where are we lacking, what what is, you know, so I think that that's a good thing, but we're not doing it at the moment, and then again, parking solved. And um under Youth Services, the idea of creating a shared online catalog with the local schools, that is a an enormous um uh effort and we don't think that it's a good idea, there, it would, I, we just don't have the technology or the staff to do something like that. They have a a different catalog and I I I just, it's just not.
I don't think we have the technology or staff to.
No, it's just not, it's just not feasible, and I don't know that it, I mean, yeah, it would be great if the, if the students could go to one place and and have all the materials at one place. That would be good, but I also think that um they they know how to use our catalog and they know how to use the school catalog, they, you know.
And this is why.
Yeah, 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 so we're not doing that. Adopt an automatic shipment program for new acquisitions, what that means is relinquishing all collection development responsibilities to the vendor that sells you books and you create um an approval plan where you say send us all the new fiction and send us this and send us that. Our customers, they want us to pick what, you know, and and it really is, I mean, our librarians spend a ton of time on collection development and we have such a small budget that they really weigh, you know, well, is this the better book or is this?
But if they did that, it'd be inconsistent with another objective, which is to reflect the cultural.
Right, a lot of um of big libraries do that, but it's not a good fit for us, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. Um, let's see, uh stalled, capture again, capture the contact information of people who attend programs, again, that's kind of post-program follow-up with people, we're not, we're not doing that very effectively. Under organizational structure, the idea that librarians should be not at the desk but roaming around to help people in the stacks. Doesn't make sense in this small library, you know, people don't wanna be accosted in the stacks and they need us, they need to be able to find us, you know, I mean, they they need to go to a place and find us. So again, that's a, was a popular thing that that some libraries do, but I've never heard of a library this size doing something like that, so we're we're not gonna do that. Um, under using data, again, uh, we're stalled on gathering outcome data from library programs, we do need to do that. And that is, that is it, unless you have any questions.
Why there was this objective around the strategic development policy that encourages entrepreneurship?
Oh, yeah, no, I don't know what that is, and that's why I wrote not achieved, what does it say in there, Bianca?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
I just find it so interesting that it's part of the library.
Yeah, I don't know what that.
It was, had to do with raising money.
For the, for the friends or?
Probably part of the foundation.
Yeah.
I mean, encourages entrepreneurship, it's a little bit.
There's, yeah.
Yeah. Whatever it is, we didn't do it.
Friends, yeah, yeah. I mean, literally, you would think that would be closing programs to teach youth how to be an entrepreneur.
And then once they're successful, they do like that.
But it's a funny thing that the board would would.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I'm not, I don't know what that's all about. So I mean, all in all, I I feel like we've accomplished a lot in in five years. There are things that we would like to do better, but given that we didn't even have librarians until right before the pandemic started, you know, we really have been operating in a really strange understaffed way for such a long time and then COVID came, so I feel like we are we're getting stabilized and building these new teams that we didn't have before and you know, we'll be ready to take on the next task and things that aren't finished, it's not that we're not gonna do them, we're just, you know, we're just at this point, kind of doing the best we can, so.
Hey. Now, we can, um, uh, a lo- a lot of this information will be uh available to uh strategic plan, right?
Yes, they, yeah, yeah, they'll look at the old stuff, for sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments about that? Okay, so moving on to item number seven on the leatherboard, if we've our accomplishments, we work.
Yeah, so I wanna, let let's start by just, um, I don't know what I do with my, so the Commissioner's Congress, which I sent you guys an email about, and then I think you got an email from the city clerk as well. So basically, this is all part of the same kind of effort, which is that we're we're adjusting to a fiscal year cycle instead of a calendar year cycle. So what I put in your, I, it wasn't in the um email packet or the packet online, but I've added it to your packet now, is the, this year's work plan and then also this document, which you've seen before, which is the you have the very, yeah, there you go, it's the very back of your pocket. Which is sort of a shortened version of the city's strategic plan that pulls out some of the elements that are most closely related to library services. Because there, the commission and board work plans are supposed to, you know, align with that strategic plan. Now, in in truth, I think that we're gonna be working on the same things, things that aren't finished from last year's and also on the strategic planning process and on policies again, because we still have so many policies that need to be updated. So I guess the question is for you, for you guys to to think about what um you wanna see on your work plan other than those things that I just mentioned, and whether you agree that those are things that should be on there, I think, strategic planning.
Kathy, what's the potential for having the ops study consultant or strategic plan consultant develop policies?
Um, that would be probably, I mean, that would be an add-on, we'd have to work with, work with them to do that.
I know other departments have hired consultants.
Financed them.
To develop policies and.
Could be helpful.
R M A is big on developing policies, which I strongly support.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea, I haven't thought about that, is actually getting some help, because it's not that we.
You have a lot on your plate.
We just can't get to it, I mean, right now, you know.
And and it isn't gonna be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would seek to add it.
Well, we could argue with the contract if it's approved.
Yes.
Right, so it's within the scope.
Yeah.
I don't know if I have time to do that, can I, can't I, I could do an amendment later, couldn't I, to amend the scope?
You could, but then it'll, it could potentially lengthen.
Or just do a new contract, I could do a separate agreement, I mean, it's pretty different work, I mean, they're doing strategic planning is one very specific thing and.
R M A to see if there are any contractors at twenty-five, she can authorize and hopefully it would cost more than twenty-five. And then it could be done on a concurrent basis.
Yeah, maybe we could, you could rephrase it, something like a review the policies and give suggestions or recommendations or something, so it's like part of the strategic plan that they would be with some of our.
Right, though, right.
Well, yeah, it's true.
I mean, I think that it would probably be more likely that we would work directly with Susan Kent and Barry Dunn wouldn't be, I mean, that's not Barry Dunn's expertise. So I just, I don't know, I don't know if it's a good fit to to try to shoehorn it in with this strategic planning consultant. But let me think about it a little bit, but the idea that we could actually get some outside help is definitely a good idea.
We need help, we're never gonna get to it, we've had to pivot so much. We need help. We're never gonna get to it. We've had to pivot so much.
But I also would like to say that uh because Dean and uh FJ, thank you, are not here. I'd like them to make sure that they give their input about, you know, the the work plan.
That's true. So we could actually, we could continue this until.
Yeah, I say let's continue.
Our special meeting.
Maybe, yeah.
And have another discussion.
Maybe kind of pull out a couple of these, just that.
Yeah, if you guys send a little, like, look at this and, yeah, think about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so.
Do we, so we should do another motion like we did to to continue?
So Annie, you were so good at it before. You can do another motion. Motion that we continue the conversation on the Board of Trustees' work plan. Continue the discussion on the library board of trustees accomplishments and work plan. All in favor?
Well, to be held at the same time as.
And thank you, to be held at the same time that we're gonna discuss the partial tax. We will add a special meeting that we can just concentrate on these key issues. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes then. All right.
Operations updates. Just, um, I put some in your packet, but there's a few additions. So I wanna let you know that unfortunately, we did not get the Tournament of Roses grant. Oh, to do a diversity assessment of our collections. Um, it's not that expensive to to do it. It's like four thousand dollars or something. So it's maybe something that we we figure out how to do on our own. At the moment, it was almost, there was a piece of it that was a relief. Because um the next thing on my list is to let you know that one of our full-time staff members is leading us. Cynthia Mitchum, who's our digital services librarian.
You mentioned that before.
Just to you, I don't think these guys know.
Oh.
Cause I couldn't, last meeting, it wasn't official. Um, she she wants to change direction. She took a job at um Cal State San Bernardino in kind of technical services. So like a backend job, much lower on the kind of pay scale. You know, her resignation letter expressed that she has just really liked being here and has learned so much. And has, you know, has has enjoyed it and it's been great. Is she's just not, it's not the right fit for her, she feels. She also told me that she tends to change jobs often. She's been a librarian, she's been a flight attendant, she came back to librarianship. And she also told me, I I and she said, this is, I don't know, this is private. But she said she just is the kind of person who feels, like she never feels like she's doing enough. Um, and she feels like there's parts of her job duties that she's not performing the way she would like to. And Maida and I both said, that's crazy. You know, you're doing fantastic. And we tell you all the time how much we appreciate you. And how much, you know, this meet, you know, she, I mean, without her and COVID and all the digital communication that, you know. She she's just done so much for us. Two years, little, well, more, more than two years. Yeah.
Yeah, and it took a long time to fill the position.
Yeah, we hired her and Judy out of the same recruitment. We hired the two at the same time. So, yeah, it's a big, it's a big loss for us. We are going to um post the recruitment Monday. Because we are hoping that the city council will approve the budget, which includes funding for a tenth staff person. That um the the recruitment that we do now, that person would also come from that list. So that July first comes and if that's approved, we can immediately go to the list and bring another person on. So hopefully, we'll just streamline um as quickly as we can. But, yeah, we're, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit tough for for a while. Uh, Maida and I have kind of farmed out her duties. But um uh, that's one of the reasons that it'd be hard to do the diversity assessment. If we had gotten the grant, would have been a challenge. As far as, yeah.
I don't know, Showcase has grants available with something like this.
Oh, the Showcase House? I don't know. I'll make a note. I mean, it's certainly something we can just ask, you know, in the next, just not this fiscal year, the next budget.
And Rotary used to give out local grants.
That's true too, yeah. Which would help us get, get, you know, I think it's like forty-five hundred dollars, something. It's not a huge amount. Let me do. Yeah, I think maybe usually applies for that. We'll talk about it.
But they, then you could ask.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we really would like to do that. The the staff have been working on um kind of a a handout or bookmark or something that will go give some parents, parents some tools for talking about literature. And, you know, kind of asking questions and thinking about some of these diversity issues with children's literature. So they're working on that. So we're excited about getting that done. But we wanna keep moving forward with this diversity, inclusion and equity stuff. So we would really like to get this done eventually, but we're not completely stalled. They're they're working on that for the children's department. Um, so that is, otherwise, everything else is in your packet. The citywide reading program uh selection committee is established. We have our open house scheduled for June first from two to four. We have a Pride Month author visit, virtual author visit. And Bianca, you had specifically asked about library uh statistics. So I I put that in here. So you can see, you know, we're not, we're not back to to normal. But you do see the the jump from March to April when we went to the more, the lengthier hours. But, yeah, we're nowhere near um our pre-COVID attendance. I mean, I think there are still people that are not comfortable um sitting in a building for hours with other people who are now not masked, you know.
Well, and I wonder how much this also reflects a shift to uh ebooks.
We did have a big leap in ebooks when the when the pandemic came. But it's been pretty steady since then. I think that if you look at the circulation numbers, they're pretty high. The only caveat is that the the current number, that twenty-two, three fifty-nine, does include auto renewals. So it's a little bit inflated. Right now, we don't have the ability to segregate out the auto renewals from the regular checkouts. So circulation is still down also, but I think it's a little bit stronger. So that tells me that people are using the materials. They just don't wanna come inside for a long time. You know, they they're maybe making fewer trips or.
I think so many, I think everybody's behavior has changed over a couple of years. I mean, a- and and I think we've all just kind of thought, do I need to do this like I'm doing this, you know, I'm gonna do this differently now. I think the two years made everything change.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see what happens. I mean, I know at Brand Library, we were closed for two years for a renovation. And we never got our numbers back. You know, life had changed. People changed their habits. People were screaming music. And maybe instead of, you know, coming in to get the CDs. And um we'll just, we'll just have to wait and see. I mean, we always have our core customers. We have families. We have kids. We have all the readers in South Pass. We have so many people in South Pass who use the library. So um I'm not, you know, I'm not worried about it, but it is, it is interesting to see. And we'll watch and see how we go. I think it'll continue to go up. And I'm really hoping that the in-person summer reading program will give us a big boost over the summer. Um, cause I think families are excited about getting back to doing that in person. And the other thing is just, I mean, it's, sounds silly, but, you know, we're doing a lot of this programming outside. So we have, you know, seventy or eighty people at Storytime and only, you know, fifteen come in to get books. They're not getting counted.
So taking pictures of them all.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you, whoever, so thank you and your staff. I I appreciate this. Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll keep looking at it, you know, it's it's fun to see and kind of watch.
Yeah.
How that, how that changes. And the other thing I think I put on here is library cards. That's not bad at all, you know? So even though um library cards, you know, typically prior to COVID, we're right on track with, so that shows me that people are coming in and and joining the library. So that's a good sign too. And that's all I have for the library, actually.
Okay, so moving on to uh communications. I don't, Dean didn't send me anything for board communications. So I'll just go to board members. Annie, can you?
I just want to say thank you to Kathy and the staff. I know we didn't go over the many items where there's a checkpoint. But I recognize each of those take a lot of effort. So um it's really amazing. I know you always say that the team is so small, but you guys do so much.
Small but mighty.
Yeah, I'm so proud to have you all. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, nothing much to add except the uh strategic uh planning, uh selecting consultant. I think it's been a smooth process, probably because other people are doing it besides me. But uh I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to getting that in place.
And here you guys, I found the thing about entrepreneurship. Recommendation fifty-one, the library board of trustees should develop a policy with the city that encourages entrepreneurship. Should the library develop additional revenue streams by be, by being more entrepreneurial? The library should not be penalized by the city, who may reduce the library's budget, the share of the general fund. For example, the library board may wish to consider charging a DVD collection building fee of one dollar per DVD at the time of checking out.
That's such an old fashioned. Well, I mean, I haven't, this is, I'm hearing this, I haven't paid attention to this.
This was our operational study from twenty sixteen.
So, yeah, it sounds like it had to do with raising. It's a little strange.
I I remembered reading about that it was, it was to raise money, was for us to go out and raise money.
When DVDs first came out, they used to charge for them, cause that's how they got the money to buy them. And that's, nobody has done that in twenty years or something, so.
We're just giving them away.
Yeah.
Spark, we, eclectic, we make art out of them, so. And and I don't have any, uh, I don't have any.
I've said all I had to say throughout the meeting.
And Ellen? Okay, so I, I mean, I'll try to be really quick. Just wanna give you update. Yuki came as, she's the co-chair of the South Pasadena Loves Our Libraries Committee. And she spoke to us at the Friends about the ballot renewal. And then she also spoke to us about the Friends of the Library, co-hosting with the library and South Pasadena Chinese American Club for the screening of the Far East Deep South film. So that is, I think, in the process, right, and happening. Jericho Road, just wanted to give you an update on that, that I met with them. And they did accept our application. So they were gonna be working with us on our first project will be the website. So I'm gonna be meeting with their volunteer that they kind of matched with us soon. And we'll hopefully get our uh website updated. So I'm pretty excited about that. Speaking of showcase, um I submitted an application on behalf of the Friends. Said if you volunteered at the showcase, you would get forty dollars per shift. And this information was shared with the bookstore uh committee, but I don't know if anybody actually volunteered cause they heard a lot of the ships were very, they they were limited. But by the time I heard about it and submitted that, um next Thursday, four of us will be attending the serving of the Purpose Conference in Ontario. The Friends uh voted to give uh two thousand dollars to the Mezzarella, which is five percent of our operating budget. So in addition to turning over the funds that we were holding, we're giving an additional, or we already gave, they have a two thousand dollars. Um, our membership, um we have a hundred seventy-two members. And uh in that last month, we brought in thirteen hundred forty-eight dollars. So total, we're up, we have eighteen thousand one hundred ninety dollars in membership. So um they'll be sending out reminder Pope's card soon for those who have not renewed. And if you hadn't done so, I'm gonna ask you to please join the Friends. It's very easy. Just go to our website and join if you're not a friend and spread the word. Um, communications has been great. We have good press coverage for all of volunteer events. Kathy was honored. And when we posted on the Facebook, our Facebook page, I mean, that is like skyrocketed. You're very popular on our Facebook page. When you, you're honored, you're you're awarded. So we put the article up there and then literally. Yeah, you you were our highest rated. So um and then um uh the communications team has been working with Kathy and and the library and the bookstore to improve the signage for the Last Chance uh books in in the book bookstore signs. And and there's many, been many, many great articles about the Friends events in our local papers and media. And this is all thanks to Sally. Sally is the head of communications. So she's been, everything I'm telling you, she's been very key in taking it on. Yeah, and um our monthly newsletter really continues to do very well. So we're having a fifty-four percent open rate, which is really high as as far as standards are going. So that does very well on our concert, on that. Our bookstore, um they raised, um, I I don't know if this is correct, but they said nine thousand dollars. Uh, oh, oh, in March. I don't think that's just in March. I think that's collectively. Uh, and most of it, believe it or not, comes from our Last Chance books.
Yeah.
Um, and the bookstore is gonna be celebrating the forty-year anniversary in July. I think the plans are still in in place. Um, it's probably gonna be, what's gonna be on the library grounds and probably on a Sunday. Donations of books are down. And so um commu- communication Sally is reaching out to the media and has an article asking for more donations. So I'm also going to encourage you to ask your friends and your neighbors to consider donating any of their used books to the Friends. A lot of people are going out to uh the Buy Nothing Groups and Nextdoor and giving away books for free to pick up. And I always wanna say, no, please donate to the Friends. So I'm asking you to do that. The the Restoration Concerts, uh their Steinway piano has become kind of a problem. And it has been determined um by a Steinway representative that it has reached the end of its life. And so, uh, yeah, yeah. It does not contain genuine Steinway part, Stanley parts, and it's not fixable right now. It's worth about twenty thousand dollars. So for the last concert we had on May eighth and the upcoming concert, they will be renting a um a Steinway. And it will be here, yeah. It's like sixteen to two thousand eight concert. Yeah. To do, so it is a big to do.
You know, having delivered, you know. Raining people in and, you can't get, telling them they need to.
Yes, yeah. So with that being said, the the committee is going to now have to rethink um their upcoming series and possibly make some changes. During the pandemic, the committee uh didn't make any money. And now they have fewer um attending than in the past. So um they're not really making enough to cover the expenses of some of, some of the musicians are very expensive. So after this last concert in May, um we're gonna have a meeting and we're gonna discuss finances in depth and see what they were doing. You know, it could be that we don't have any pianists play um at the concert. Well, the, yes, yes, we do. Yeah, there's a a MOU with it, but yes, we own it. So.
Well, and you should sell, you should sell the cookies and the coffee. And see about maybe selling wine.
I think we, um, some of the conversation that's going around about having a chloé, that's how he said, is that a lot of the, uh, they don't feel comfortable yet having food and and drinking. And and unless it's because of COVID, COVID. Cause they, that was one of the things they were talking about.
Yeah.
Because the New Hollywood String Quartet is very, very popular. They have a large following and they thought maybe they could bring them in, but that wasn't to raise money. But, yeah, maybe, you know, those are things you're gonna have to think about and and and. Yeah, it's, what is, what is it, two hundred thousand? Thousand dollars for a sky. Also, so some of our um our musicians, they're contracted, I guess, and they can only play on a Steinway.
Yeah.
Yep, very interesting. These, these musicians are not your average run-of-the-mill. They're very accomplished and they make ten thousand dollars a performance or more. For some reason, they love us and love the library. The the past our Restoration Concert chairs have, you know, great relationships with them. And so um that will be, I guess, a discussion in in there. I agree, we can, there may be a way to raise it, but is that how the Friends wanna be seen, raising two hundred thousand dollars? It's a conversation, two hundred thousand dollars for. It's a conversation, two hundred thousand dollars for a piano.
And you're gonna, I mean, you're gonna sell this one?
Well, I don't know what they've determined to do yet, um, it's, you know, it's worth about twenty thousand dollars, it's, it's fine probably for a family or somebody in their home, but, yeah.
Kathy lined up a very generous donor.
Yes, Mr. Cole.
To underwrite a large part of.
Jericho?
Yes, and we've, are, I've already suggested that to them, he did underwrite a, a large part of the summer, um, the Summer Festival, and, and in fact, we had to return that money.
Right.
To Mr. Cole, when we decided not to go for it, but that would be a suggestion to see if Mr. Cole would generously donate.
Is that something very, you know, uh, physical, and it's like, we need a piano, like, people usually wanna donate to something tangible.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a lot of discussion, there's discussion about, I know you were in the meeting, about rentals or leasing, but again, is that the focus of what the Friends are going to raise their funds for?
Right.
It's a bigger discussion.
It's a bigger discussion.
Lease. Volunteer organization can't lease a two hundred thousand dollar, you know, sign an agreement for ten years. So they're gonna have to.
So anyway, that will be interesting to, um, on June eighth, to see what, what the discussions will be, so that's my report.
Thank you, that's a very good report, thank you, and I always have that meeting, oh, and, well, maybe sell those coasters.
I know, that's what I say.
Might buy one ivory key for a piano, um, I didn't know Steinways were that expensive either. And also, uh, and, and again, I'm just gonna put in the plug of us trustees, I think we, please really do think about becoming a member of the Friends, it's, it's very simple, and I just think it, it looks good that the trustees are also Friends of the Friends members, uh, of Friends of the Library.
And there's no fixed amount, whatever you donate, that's.
And just, you know, spread the word, and, no, and I, I don't have any, it was a very good, those meetings are very good, and a lot is covered, as tell what Ellen said. And then, that to you?
Yeah, so I wanted to share, I got a memo stated May tenth from the City Clerk, reminder advisory body meetings returned to in-person. And it says, um, as previously announced, the City of South Pasadena has transitioned back to in-person meetings, all advisory body meetings are to be conducted in person in the City Council chambers, which obviously we are exempt from that. The city is conducting hybrid meetings to allow for public participation, however, all commissioners and board members must attend in person to participate in the meeting. If an advisory body member wishes to teleconference, they must abide by specific Brown Act teleconferencing requirements, which includes, um, at least a quorum of the advisory body must participate from the location within the city's jurisdiction. Each teleconference location must be identified in the agenda, agendas, agendas must be posted at each teleconference location. Each teleconference location must be accessible to the public, so if you're at home, you basically.
That is not legally accurate as of now, because we are still covered under the Governor's, the combination of the Governor's emergency order and SB, I think it's three eighty-one. However, I think that may expire at the end of June, at which point, then that would become applicable.
Well, this is, they're saying as of now, I mean, I know what to tell you. So we'll see.
You couldn't do it from your home, because then it's not.
It's not a public, you, you'd have to let, I mean, yeah, technically, you'd have to let someone.
You'd have to identify it on the Brown Act notice and allow that to the public.
So I, I will, I will seek clarification, I mean, this is the memo from the City Clerk that came out this week, saying this is as of now, underlying, they must be there in person. I know.
There's some miscommunication somewhere.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that's about, especially since we have until June.
As soon as the emergency, when the emergency order applies, cause there hasn't been, to the best of my knowledge, any change in the Brown Act yet. That would be, that would be accurate.
I'm not sure why they're pushing it now, but I, I will find out, so that if we, um, when our, we have our special meeting, if we need to do that with, um, you know, if somebody needs to connect via Zoom.
Yeah, great, thank you, thank you.
I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
No, that's all.
Any other last minute comments? Okay, well, thank you, everybody, so then I adjourn the May twelfth meeting at eight thirty-seven. Thank you, and always thank you, Sean, for putting great packets together, and your staff, Kathy, and all, all, all that you do, it really, it really does help us as, you know, to have it all, you know, concise, they're wonderful information, so thank you, Kathy.
And Sean, and, and they're being distributed earlier.
We're trying.
The case.
Yeah, we're trying. Yeah. Sean, did you stop the recording? I also should tell you, this is just, just to let you know, that a group, a local group reached out to me and asked me to come and speak to them, it was, um, it's, uh, it's, the abbreviation is POE, it's a.